All right. Good evening and welcome to the North Bend City Council meeting for September 24th at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. I'd like to welcome everybody who's here in person, for those who are watching online live or at a later date. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
............................................................
All right. Good evening and welcome. City Recorder, will you help us with the roll call?
Counsel Jones.
Here.
Counsel Hamilton.
Here.
Counsel Garboden.
Here.
Mayor Engleke.
Here.
Counsel Gall.
Here.
Counsel Schultz.
Here.
Counsel Noroff.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Before we go to number three, which is our ceremonial item, I'd like to make a note to the City Recorder and to our City Administrator that I did review the council rules and one of the things that I can do as the mayor is to do a special called meeting. So I'd like to make a note that I would like to have a special called meeting at the Hall of Champions on October 24th over there at North Bend High School. And just go ahead and mark that for your calendars.
What time?
11:00 AM. 11:00, yes, 11:00 AM.
All right.
11:00 on the clock?
Yeah. 11:00 is good. Okay. All right. Thank you. Now we'll go ahead and move on to the ceremonial items tonight. I'd like to bring up our Police Chief, Cal Mitz.
Good evening, Mayor Engleke and rest of the council members. Tonight, I'm going to have Jason Croft come on up. So Jason is our new Community Service Officer. Been on the job now for about two weeks and has really been adjusting well. Jason comes to us with a bit of a different background and I think it's going to be a real good, strong addition to this program because it is a part-time police position as well as part-time Public Works. And Jason has a background in construction, has worked with Knife River for several years, worked with Oregon Department of Transportation, ODOT, and worked with a lot of inspections and things like that. So a lot of the job that for the previous Community Service Officer, which we'll talk to here in a minute, that was kind of foreign to him is really going to be a strength for Jason. So we are really looking forward to it. And like I said, he's a community member here and has a family and we are really looking forward to great things from him as he continues this program and I'm sure will grow the program and some of the things that he does will be a little bit different than some of the rest and new to us as well. So I'd like to welcome him now.
Yeah. Thank you.
Oh, no, not so fast.
So, you know, I was going to ask our City Administrator, we do have our next item of business, what we could do is get some photos now or do them all together after the swearing in or what you...
Well, the families.
Let's get the family up to do it first. Yeah.
Did you bring any family? Oh, see?
Okay. This is even better.
You could have, you know. Oh, okay. All right. All right, gotta get a little closer. Say, anyone else in the council want to join? That's up to you all.
Yeah, let's go.
Okay. Yeah. See, I always relate to the newspaper and stuff. Okay. All right. You guys are funny. All right. They'll be available later for five bucks apiece.
Okay.
Just kidding. Just kidding. Okay. Y'all getting in? Come on in. Yeah. This is where they're like, why?
When I walked in, I thought of my daughter, by the way. You look a lot like Cynthia over there.
Yeah, I'm stunned, though.
Yeah.
Okay. One, two, three, four. One, two, three. Okay. One, two, three. Okay.
I wanted to stand.
Balance it.
There we go.
There you go. It just didn't seem balanced.
Well, we'll...
Okay. All right. All right. I go back a little. Here we go. Okay, ready? Here we go. All right. I apologize. I always say this. I take several because of the blinky blinky. I don't blink. You guys do. All right. Thank you.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And welcome to the... Thank you. We have a parent role.
No, I know. But hell, it worked out there. All right, now.
So we have another ceremonial item and that is our swearing in of our Patrol Officer, Joshua Nawatney.
Those guys think they're... Come on up.
So as I mentioned, this is our previous Community Service Officer and Josh Nawatney has worked in that position for the last year. He's done just an outstanding job there. And during that time, he realized that he really felt like he belonged with the patrol force and basically dedicated himself to jumping through a lot of hoops, going through a hiring process and making his way to where he is today. He actually was sworn in Police Department last week and tonight is ceremonial swearing in by the mayor. Josh, again, is a community member here at Coos County and has been here all your...
Almost.
All your life. Exactly. Like I said, he did a really great job. I'm sure a lot of people recognize him and will continue to recognize him as he moves out there from his previous job, but we are looking forward to great things and a speedy training completion. So we'll get you there. So, but the mayor...
Okay. All right. Okay. Do you raise your right hand? I, Joshua Nawatney.
I, Joshua Nawatney.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and of Oregon.
Of the United States and of Oregon.
And the Charter and Ordinances.
The Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of North Bend.
Of the City of North Bend.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
For the City of North Bend.
For the City of North Bend.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. In the hallway, I was giving a compliment to the officer about how we get compliments as a city all the time because of the good work that he is doing. So you did a great job in the position before you and you're going to do an even, it's going to be an incredible position that you take now, so.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Nice. Congratulations. All right. So we'll let... Do you want to do a couple photos?
Yes.
Them first and then we'll get the council to jump in?
Yes.
For me, this is a bittersweet promotion. He's just so doggone good. So you have some... I'd see them almost every morning. Are you ready? All right. So there's a little gap, so in just a little thing. All right. Okay. Here goes. Excellent. All right.
All right. Come on, council, let's go on in.
Now, we're really going to give them something to do.
Mary City won't limit this time, so you may have seen...
Just three?
Yeah.
You'd be surprised if you look at them. I don't... I always delete those ones. You know, it's... All right.
It's mizing here.
Here goes. Here goes. Here goes. And she wore a jacket. Is it too cold in here? Is it too cold or too hot? Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar as our motion from the council. I heard a first from Garboden and a second from Counsel Gall. Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the consent calendar as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item of business is public comment. The City Recorder, I have two in front of me and then I believe there is none online, correct? Okay. All right. Well, before we begin our public comment, I just want to say thank you for participating in public comment this evening. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes the input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting Laws, this isn't a time for us to have dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our City Administrator and City Recorder are taking any notes of action if needed. So the first person that I have for public comment is Shane Compton. Is there a Shane in the room? Shane, hi. If you want to go ahead and come forward, there's a chair here and the two circular things in front of you are mics that will be able to pick it up. If you want to go ahead and state your name and address and we'll go ahead and have the City Recorder begin.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yep.
We're good? Okay. Yes, I'm one of the owners of the properties on North Bend... North, I'm sorry, North Broadway, North Bend. 2419 and 2452, I believe, is the correct addresses. And I'm very aware of the situation. You guys had put a resolution out about six months or so ago on wanting the properties to be addressed, either the house is brought up to code or whatever term was used in the letter, or the house is taken down. And I'm just here with one simple request, to have some additional time.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next person is for public comment is, I believe, Counselor Noroff has signed up for public comment and we'll go ahead and have her leave the dais if our City Recorder wants to take note of that, that she's leaving the dais and going down to the public comment chairs. Thank you. Sorry. My brain at home. Pardon me. I'm sorry. Do we have a copy available for our City Recorder? Did you... Do we have a copy of this as well?
I should.
Okay. All right. Okay. State your name and address into the recorder here and our City Recorder will begin the time.
Susanna Noroff, 1571 Mead Avenue. So I'm here to just ask for help because I'm kind of getting nowhere. I'm kind of in limbo and I would like to bring this to the council's attention. And I'll read from what I had sent in, I think, back in July to Mr. Milliron. "A new house has been constructed on a vacant lot uphill from my property. I saw earlier that the foundation drains have been hard piped to the rear of the property with the open end at the property line, while it run... will run directly onto my property. That's the foundation drain. Today, I found that the downspout for the gutter for the north half of the roof is not hard piped toward the street, as is the downspout for the south half of the roof. Instead, it is hard piped to the rear of the lot with an open end on a slope and it will hit the fence that's halfway across the rear property line and will aggron run downhill and then drop down a bank directly onto my property. This is a concentrated point source and will have a negative impact on my property. My house is vintage 1910. All charmed and no insulation until I bought it and insulated it, but the foundation, the basement concrete is not what you would consider good concrete today. It's dating 1910 or somewhere thereabouts. So water in groundwater is a problem. I would like to understand what the city code says about this. So Mr. Milliron referred me to the county because both Coos Bay and North Bend contract with the county building department for plumbing, plumbing inspection and that kind of thing. So I then spoke with the... or contacted the county and Jason Green is the county plumbing inspector. I believe he's a journeyman plumber. And he said, "Hello, Susanna. I am forwarding you my inspection result from Friday. The piping used to convey stormwater on the north side of the house needs to be buried 12 inches below the surface and needs to discharge in a manner that satisfies Derek Wyndham's requirement for the City of North Bend. That being said, I've seen many residents in North Bend where stormwater discharges into a dry well on the property where the stormwater has been harvested, i.e. roof drains. Derek is aware that the south rain discharges onto the sidewalk, which does not meet city code." And I believe I have a photo of that. From the south side. So the north side, the house dimensions are roughly 50 by 40. It's a California developer. The contractor still owns the property, having built the house. It has been on the market since last October. Nobody's bought it to date. So that's the plumbing inspector and it says down on the third page, "Comments: Responded to a complaint about rain drain discharge."
All right. Thank you for your time and thank you for the information that you provided.
So what I'm looking for is help because I'm not allowed to talk to Public Works.
Counsel Noroff, your public time is up. So next on the agenda is resolution... Let's see. Yes. Number six. After public comment is Resolution Number 3358, authorizing signing agreements with Enterprise Fleet Management. Is there a motion from the council?
I'll make a motion when we approve Resolution Number 3358. I'll second.
I heard a first from Counselor Garboden and a second from Counselor Hamilton. Any discussion? All in favor of passing Resolution 3358, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number seven then is our public hearing approving changes to the fiscal year 2024-25 budget for fleet management. So I know I've got a public hearing information in front of me. I believe we have our attorney, Mark Wolf, online and I'm not sure, is he participating in... I have my information that I'm going to read here. Just...
This is just a public hearing.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if you just follow the script, you should be fine.
All right.
Staff will jump in if needed.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Public hearing on approving changes to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget Resolution Number 3359. This is the time set for a public hearing on approving changes to the fiscal year 2025 budget Resolution 3359. At this time, I will open the hearing. I will ask the counselors, are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte con tax to report? Will the staff please present their reports?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have a supplemental budget resolution before you this evening. The resolution affects the wastewater fund, the gas tax fund, the general fund and the equipment and construction fund. None of the changes are above 10% of the funds already adopted expenditures. Therefore, a resolution is the only instrument necessary to... for the supplemental budget. The necessity for this change is a direct result of the previous resolution for entering into an agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management. The majority of changes in the supplemental budgets is a reclassification of capital outlays to debt service expenditures. It also recognizes the anticipated resources that will be derived from the sale of existing fleet vehicles. And in total, you'll be asked to essentially approve an additional $85,714 in appropriations to the fiscal year 2025 budget.
Okay. All right. I'll now open the public testimony portion of the hearing. Written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to members of the council and staff. There is a time limit of three minutes per speaker and each speaker must state their name and address into the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of approving changes to the fiscal year 2024-25 budget? Resolution 33... 3359. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All right. Hearing none. I'll close the public testimony portion. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about the matter for the staff? Seeing none. If there's no further discussion, I will now close the public hearing at this time. I will entertain a motion from the council.
I move the City Council approve Resolution 3359, increasing the total adopted budget for fiscal year '25 by $85,714.
Second.
I have a first from Counselor Jones and a second from Counselor Garboden. Is there any other further discussion? Would you like a roll call vote?
Yes, please.
All right. So I will ask your assistance in that.
Counsel Jones.
In favor of the resolution.
Counsel Hamilton.
For the resolution.
Counsel Garboden.
For the resolution.
Mayor Engleke.
For the resolution.
Counsel Gall.
Yes.
Counsel Schultz.
For the resolution.
Counsel Noroff.
For the resolution.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So that was the public hearing and then that was the... That was then also eighth, correct?
Eighth, yes.
Approving the changes. So then I think we're good to move on to number nine. Thank you. Okay. Appreciate your work on that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So we're good to move on to agenda item number nine, which is expanding air service to our Region 43. We heard from our Executive Director of the airport last night. And is there a motion from the council? I suggest a motion on page 43 of the packet.
There is. It's the will of the council.
Oh. Okay. And so the ask was, was it seven?
Seventy-five hundred per year, three years.
$7,500 commitment for three years to go for a matching grant to increase air service to...
If they get in northbound.
If they get a northbound flight.
I move to direct $7,500 a year for a total of three years, for three years totaling $22,500 towards the airport if they extend a north route.
And what you're like beginning in your...
Beginning in 2026.
2025.
I'll second it.
I have a first from Counselor Jones, a second from Counselor Gall.
I think they said south or north, right? Are we only...
No. That's only north.
We're in north.
We say so.
Isn't that right?
Yep. Ours, you can designate as you want. They are seeking additional routes. They have money to extend it, so you can decide that you want to say northbound only or you can say extended service. Here it is.
Our commitment back in 2019 was...
Was only north. Yes.
Northbound.
The only change that's occurred is that they're looking now to expand a low-cost regional carrier or carriers to other destinations. They had mentioned, for instance, Las Vegas and other routes in California. So it is really the will of the council. If you want to say, if you're only interested in that Portland, Seattle, northbound, include it in your motion and you're fine. That's the will of the council.
She did.
She did.
You said. And are we comfortable with keeping that in the motion to just the north? I'm hearing our council president say yes and seeing a nod from Counsel Gall.
I would do both, but because I'm going to have to meet back, what if they only get south and not north? Do we not...
I know.
Yeah.
Does it inhibit the...
We already go south. Let's go north.
Well, I would imagine that there would be time to have somebody circle back if we...
The way Roger explained it, I know he said north and then their potential for doing it on their own to Vegas and stuff, but I know customer base wise and everything, we would be way better off having a north service than Las Vegas.
When I wasn't here in 2019, so I did not know that that was stipulation, so I just thought we wanted to expand flights to the airport.
Okay.
Because we already, like you say, we already did this in 19 and it never, because of COVID, it never came true. So all we're doing is re-upping our, you know, our original giddyup, so.
I just think times have changed in five years.
Huh?
I said, I think times have changed in five years, but I will go with it for now and again we can... I mean, if you, you know...
Let me ask our City Administrator this question.
We can have a magic motion.
The question on the floor is 7,500 for three years for the northbound flight. And it sounds like there's still some moving parts before things like that would happen. If for some reason our commitment to that $7,500 caused some issues with the grant, would there be time for them to... Because we're talking about the budget for '25, which is those decisions would be done in May budget season. So what I guess my question is, is that if that was an issue with the airport, we can go ahead with the motion that's on the floor, then would there be time for the airport to come back to us and say, "Hey, let me make our case"? Because we don't make these official budget decisions until May, would they be able to come back and say, "We really need your support on this" or, "Okay, we're fine with the northbound flight commitment"? Is there time to fix it if we need to have a discussion later?
For clarity, they have in place a $750,000 federal grant and they are seeking additional funds. I believe the number they gave last night was they've already gotten commitments for about $900,000. So far exceeds the $750,000 matching, which is great. And that northbound is their priority, that their leakage report that they have shown shows other markets they want to go after. They can come back at any time to the governing body and request a modification to any action that you've taken. So your motion and second is perfectly fine. And again, we had spoken about fiscal year '26, so you can always alter or change.
Okay. Great.
As could a subsequent counsel.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll call the question. We have the first, we have the second, we've had the discussion. All in favor of the motion to have the City of North Bend commit $7,500 for a three-year period starting in the fiscal year '26 towards the increases of flights northbound out of OTH, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then the next item on the agenda was number 10, authorization to purchase replacement mower, Kubota tractor and Tiger motor. There is a motion on... Suggested motion on page 45.
I move to authorize staff to purchase a Kubota M5 from Unkwa Valley Tractor and a Tiger mower from Tiger Mowers in the not-to-exceed amount of $110,000.
Second.
I have a first from Counsel Hamilton and a second from Counselor Noroff. Is there any discussion? All in favor then to authorize staff to purchase the Kubota M5 from Unkwa Valley Tractor and Tiger mower with Tiger Mowers in the not-to-exceed amount of $110,000, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 11 is authorization to purchase a new 1800 CFM hybrid blower for wastewater treatment plant. Is there a motion from the council?
I move to authorize staff to purchase a Kaiser Hybrid Screw Blower, Screw Blower from KPSCO Equipment for $1,489 plus fixed by $100 shipping.
And install said blower.
Second.
First from Councilor Garboden, second from Councilor Gahl. Any discussion? All right, all in favor to authorize the staff to purchase the Kaiser hybrid screw blower from APSCO Equipment, $101,489 plus 5,500 shipping and install said blower, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The 12th item on the agenda was any action from executive sessions. We had none. We'll move to our city administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Couple of things quick. Proud to say that our city recorder has met all certification requirements for our certified municipal clerk through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Her eligibility to apply will now take place November 19th and so we'll look to officially recognizing her at a future meeting. The Main Street program had one heck of a blowout, Talk of the Town event. There was music, there was engagement, there was food. We even had the Coast Guard there. In fact, the Coast Guard thanked us today for really working to engage them in the community. And so, overall great event. In fact, we'll be retooling some of our Talk of the Towns and then try to sort of put a larger one under the umbrella over there. Was happy to say that the Oregon State Fire Marshal's office came in and conducted a in-person review of our defensive space grant. You may recall that the city was awarded a quarter million dollars. And so, we've done multiple projects. Simpson Park is an example, others throughout the community. They just were blown away. We did what we said we would do. They saw that we were maintaining what we're doing and they got an opportunity to see how we're going to manage the remainder parts of the project. We do have another grant application before them, modified a little differently, but we got all glowing stars from the state. So, that was great. The renovations at the library are moving forward. I'll be issuing an executive order under our existing code authorized by the council that will remove overnight homeless camping in the construction zone. We have plenty around the other areas that are already designated. So, we're doing this for life and safety while we continue the renovation projects and they actually expand further. And then last but not least, the police department is the first here on the coast to roll out the My PD Connect app. This is going to take off a huge burden off of the police department. This is a way for our police department to provide better service with fewer resources. The app's free to download. It's available off of our website. There's a QR code and you'll be able to report, say abandoned vehicles, criminal mischief, vandalism, identity theft, fraud, forgery, shoplifting thefts. Do all the online reporting, upload photos, videos, everything. And so, it's really going to set us ahead. And yet again, another first for North Bend and the coast. So, congratulations to the police department. And the entire report plus everything about that app is on our social media, in our website and in our report. So, back to you, Madam Mayor.
That's great, thank you. Number 14 is committee reports. I'm not believing we have any. So, I will go ahead and move on to council comments. Councilor Nordoff, we'll start with you.
Okay, I would like to talk a little bit about drainage law. Now, drainage law, there's no specific statute concerning drainage law. It's all case law, all of Oregon drainage law and case law. In short, what it says is you have to take, your property has to accept any drainage that's normally going to come your direction. You know, rain falls and it sinks in, some of the runoff's the natural stuff. Now, when a new structure is built on property that's uphill from you and there's a roof there and there's a driveway there and all of a sudden, stuff's not percolating like it was when it was a garden or a side yard. It's called concentrated. And that's where case law maintains that the property owner uphill from you either, either takes care of the drainage on his property so that you don't get a slug of water out an open pipe on a slope pointed in your direction, that that doesn't happen, or he pays you to take that drainage and you deal with it with a front drain or something similar. Okay, so what do you do when a property is built and there's no provision for them handling their roof runoff on their property?
Madam Mayor?
Yep.
I would ask you to engage your city attorney. I would encourage you to engage your.
If they've been doing it for a long, if the house has been there a long time.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and move, I'm going to, Councilor Nordoff, your, this is not the purpose of your.
And which case is okay.
This is not the purpose of our council comments or to advocate for things on your property and I'm afraid that you might be jeopardizing your oath of office again. So, I will go ahead and ask the attorney if he wants to speak now or should I just go ahead and move on to Councilor Schwartz for her council comments?
If, if you're going to move on, go ahead and move on.
All right, let's move on. Councilor Schultz, would you have any comments that are not about your home?
No comment.
Thank you. Councilor Gahl.
I just got, you know, we, we get a lot of action in here for the, the police department and the fire department. And I'm, I'm pretty, it's pretty cool stuff because, you know, I'm, I, I blow up the tunnel every home game for the, in fact, we donated a good part of the tunnel. But anyway, to support North Bend High School and, and I'm coming off the track from, from blowing that up and here's Jared Dennehy. And it hadn't been that many years ago, we watched him on football field and now he's taking crowd control and all that on. And it just seems like it's, you know, evolution of, of North Benders and that's pretty cool. That's all I got.
Okay, all right. I think we have Councilor Garboden, Councilor Hamilton.
You know, we always, we thank staff a lot, but you know, as the city manager pointed out about Macy and her completions and stuff, and she does a lot of stuff behind the scenes and is always kind of like, remind me of staff or send me an email or if I ask her questions, I get them back very quick. So, thank you Macy for your hard work, I appreciate it.
Councilor Jones.
I, I love that and I really appreciate how staff work together to tie up the loose ends and are just tireless. I want to just say one more thing about that. I really appreciate the writing, the research, the tolerance of my questions, the depth that you're all able to go into for all of the projects that we get information about. It's really good. I reference it a lot. I reference the website a lot when people have questions and it's important for me. And, and I appreciate you bridging the language gap between you as an expert and me as not an expert at all in any way. So, I thank you. I thank you all for your excellent writing, all of that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I do appreciate everybody's effort that they put into the Talk of the Town. I know those things just don't happen. I see a lot of people in this room that were there and I appreciate all the hard work. And, and again, to the council, as always, I, I remind people that you are volunteers and that you took an oath of office to look out for the best interest of the entire city, not just your street, not just your house. And so, I appreciate that. I know that you're looking out for the best interest, the majority of you are. So, I'll go ahead and move off of council comments and into other business. We have already made a moment, a comment earlier in this evening that we have our special call meeting. So, I think we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting and then move right into our URA. So, council meeting adjourned and we'll go ahead and open up our North Bend, North Bend Urban Renewal Agency meeting. And that is for September 24th, 7:37 here in the council chambers. I'll call the North Bend Urban Renewal Agency meeting to order and ask our city recorder to do a roll call of the commissioners.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Garboden.
Here.
Commissioner Chair Engleby.
Here.
Commissioner Gahl.
Here.
Commissioner Schultz.
Here.
Commissioner Nora.
Here, thank you.
All right, number, after the roll call, we have no public comment this evening.
Correct.
So, I'll move to number four, which is our URA renewal agency consent calendar. Is there a motion from the commissioners?
I move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
I hear a first from Commissioner Nordoff, a second from Commissioner Garboden. Any discussion? All in favor to accept the approval of the URA minutes from September 10th as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five is the reciprocal easement between 1840 Union. If our chair or executive director of the URA would like to talk to the URA board about this? Or is there anything, or we did hear about it last night. So, is there a motion from that? We could go into, is there a motion from the URA board on item five?
It's a straightforward motion if you want to.
I'll move to authorize the URA director to sign his reciprocal easement with Dana Sweet, the owner of 1840 Union.
Second. Okay, I heard a first from Commissioner Hamilton, a second from Commissioner Jones. Is there any questions or discussion from the commission? Because we do have our public works director here if we need to. I think we covered it last night. All right, all in favor then of to move to authorize the URA executive director to sign a reciprocal easement with Dana Sweet, the owner of 1840 Union, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number six is the executive director's report.
Very quickly, a couple of updates. We'll be issuing the request for expressions of interest on bay cleaners and so that'll be going out. I saw some chatter online. For some reason, someone thinks we got $200,000 and spent all that money removing the tree and, you know, fixing the fencing on the bat. So that you all know and can address that. We had an adjoining property line issue where we had to take out a tree that was basically sitting on the building. So, we took all of the immediate hazards around. We stabilized the earth behind us and had put in a fence. We'd previously already reported that. And we did not want to do any of the interior renovations until we got the approval through the state so we can move forward now with a different tenant. We're already working on the RFI for the outside, the RFP for the outside exterior, the roof, things of that nature. But the RFI is for the interior tenant. Second, the properties that the URA purchased at Sherman and Washington, if you haven't seen them in the last, you know, week or so, the painting's done, they're, they're sealing the final windows. They did all the beautiful plaster work. There was a lot more rot than we ever anticipated. That building was a much more blighted. And so, we've documented photos throughout the whole process. So, if you get questioned by folks, you can actually show them in photos. No, unless there's someone that just wanted to throw money away, would they rationally come and dump all that money in just to get that building to where it is? So, we have an asset, it's well worth the investment and we did not exceed the difference between the purchase price and the appraised value. And that was always the goal of keeping all of that in line. Once we finish up the last bit, we're going to move over to what was the former Salon Bella and renovate that and then make that open for business. I will tell you that North Forty is converting its pizza ovens and will soon also be in the pizza business. So, that's all from the URA report. Thank you.
I think that was the last thing on the agenda item, right? Okay, meeting adjourned.